Good evening, everybody, all two in the audience. Welcome to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning board appeals meeting for December 20th, 2023. Before we get into the meat of the schedule, I just wanted to introduce our new member, Brian Normoy, who's over here. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're really looking forward to having you on our board. Brian brings a wealth of experience. He was on the Town and Woodstock planning board. So we're really fortunate to have you and that experience. And we're going to work with you, so welcome.
Thank you.
Anyway, so we had two sets of minutes, one for October 18th and one for November 15th. Everybody have a chance to take a look at them, I hope. Okay, I took a look and I didn't see any glaring or whatever, so they look fine to me. But I'll take one at a time. October 18th, does anybody have any questions, concerns, corrections? No? Okay. And not hearing any, I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented for October 18th, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Alright. And same thing for November 15th. Any questions, concerns, corrections? No? Okay. Hearing none, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented for the meeting of November 15th, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, passed. So we're up to date, that's good. Alrighty, I don't think we have any announcements. And so we're into new applications. The first application is case number 1048, Jody Mead, 23 Winston Drive. Is there somebody here for that? Alright. Hi, how are you?
Very good.
If you could state your name for the record, and then really all we're going to do is to evaluate whether the application is sufficient enough or us to accept it. If it is, we'll put it on for the next meeting, which is January 17th, I think, for a public hearing. So if you could just walk us through the application, we do have it, but if you could just take us through.
Absolutely. So I'm representing Perry, Licensed Lancer Bear for Perry-Lancervane. We are in the town of Ulster, right on the other side of the Rhine Cliff Bridge. I'm representing Jody with an area variance for a front yard offset, which is with regards to the proposed installation of a pool, patio, and some fencing. At this point, what we have is the application and the plana metrics showing the exact distances of each item that is going to be required for a variance. We've created a chart with our variance required footage. It was also showing the distances from the current boundary line. A little bit of history here, this subdivision obviously predates the zoning, the current zoning. Jody's home is most likely one of the first homes built in the subdivision, and it was built right around the time of the subdivision. So as you can see on the plan here, that basically nothing fits within the front yard setback as prescribed, if with term zoning. So that is why we are here, and we are looking for some info as to how we can move forward with regards to what is being required and what else we could provide for you.
I did see that you supplied a couple of things which we, I don't think it was with the original application, but it looks like you supplemented putting in some renderings. I don't think.
Yeah, that was Jody's department, dude. That was Jody's department. So whatever she has submitted with regards to drawings, I did send in a couple of pictures to give you an idea of what it looks like driving by the site. You know, it's on the backside of the driveway, so the visibility is not, you know, it's not exactly visible heading, let's see, you're heading north. And I gave you a north, yeah, so that would be your heading north view. So I mean, it's hard to see in this picture, and I don't want to get in the way of the projector, but the pool will be back over here in the back area on the other side of the vehicle. And it is, okay, thank you.
Is that in the application? We're just looking around for it, see if, as long as it's, do we have that? Okay.
I think. And then I think you have another.
Yeah, there's one more. This one, this one here is not the best of all.
Oh, it's a second, no, okay.
It was pretty sunny that day, so I didn't get a great picture from my phone. But again, here's my truck, and on the other side of the truck, and on the other side of the black car here is the area of the pool. And pool house will be here, so you will, the back of the pool house would be right over in here. Up a little further, most likely off like the passenger door of my truck. And then the pool will be further back and beyond that.
So I think what would be helpful for us, and this is a common thing, and actually Gretchen has some examples of what we've done in the past, actually some pools and some other things, is rendering showing like where the pool is going to be, the fence is going to be, and the shed, so that we have an idea of where it fits, you know, on the property.
So are you looking for an elevation drawing or a plan, or something that's plan view?
So I actually pulled up some of those examples, just to kind of show you. This was like, this is one example, kind of like a rendering, so you can see kind of like a before and after.
Okay.
So you basically kind of inserted the pool in here. I did provide something.
Yeah. No, no, there were some, and we have like, for example, this, which is.
You know, I spent a lot of money on survey and I just.
Right. Here's what was for, this is what you were.
We need to have an idea.
No, I had something a little bit more than that. I had an actual pool.
No, there's an actual pool right here. Yeah, I got that here.
I don't have that in mind.
Um, here we go. This one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then there's another one here that shows kind of a fence, I don't know if it. If that's what you're looking, what kind of fence you're looking.
Yeah, I, yeah, there hasn't been a final, but.
It's one of the two?
Yeah.
One's reddish and the other one's kind of gray.
Yeah, I don't know that I have a final.
Well, we need to, I mean, we actually need to know what you're proposing, what it's going to look like. Because part of our review of this is to see how this has been in the neighborhood.
Sure.
And how it's going to look in the neighborhood. So we have to have a definitive, you know, what this fence is going to look like. Is the height going to be four, five, or six feet?
So we have that, on this plan here, we basically spelled out the heights of what fences we're going to need. And what I did was I color coded them here.
Okay.
So anything showing red would be a four-foot fence, proposed. Anything in dark purple, kind of bluish, is a five-foot.
Right.
So here, so we have pool, five foot, five foot, four foot, fall through here, and five foot in the back over here.
Okay, and it looks like most of that is in the back anyway, so.
Yeah, it is, it is. And actually, this, this whole piece right here basically fits in the current zoning. Okay. This four-foot fence that we're proposing is 99.9, other than this little corner right here, is all within the current zoning set.
Yeah, and I think, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, like in the back you're up to six foot?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sorry, so the fences are right here, right?
Yeah, correct.
There, here, here. And then there's, is this a green, is this a new one?
That's existing, that's.
That's existing, okay.
Existing, yeah.
So, so yeah, but fences, they can actually be in the setbacks. It's more of a height question, and with the rear and side, you're allowed up to six feet. So it looks like you're fine there, because it looks like nothing's six feet.
Yeah, no, we're.
And in the front, you can have up to four foot in the front, not even within the setback, just 50 feet. So I think you're, I don't think you need a variance for the fence, but it's, sorry if I'm not following. It's, it is five feet in the front. Where, where in the, which one? This, this one?
So this right here, this piece right here would be five foot, right there.
But it's more than 50 feet from the.
Yeah, it is, definitely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so the way that the front yard setback is written is that it's four feet if it's 50 feet from the road. If it's beyond that, you don't, there's, there's no variance.
Yeah, so we definitely, we need that. So that's, that's good news. So with that being said, Jody, it's going to be whatever they want, further requirements, you know, with regards to like this here, I mean, is this, what you did, Jody?
Yeah.
I didn't see this, so that's actually kind of.
You know, that's helpful.
I think that's what we.
Yeah, that's kind of a neat, but we also need to see how the shed's going to be situated on the property, how the fencing's going to be situated, just so we, we know what it's going to look like on the property. And, and that's what we always require of every applicant. Because again, one of the key things we have to consider is how is it going to look and how is it going to blend or not blend into the neighborhood? That's a very big item in our consideration, so, you know.
Can I have that? I don't know how, like, I, so I've gone to like actual high-end architects and they said it's something like this, the scale of the project that I would ask them to do, they would charge $10,000 to do, like, because it's, I have, I've actually talked to.
I, I don't know who the other.
So.
No, I don't, so I, I'm, I'm the numbers guy, so this, the drawing, you know, this stuff here is out of my realm of what I even provide for clients. So whatever you, so I'm here to clarify for her what exactly is required. So like this here, this, this is more of a plan view. You're looking definitely Google or style. You, you're okay with plan view versus.
That's nice to have, but I need to.
You want an elevation though, you want to see it looking like.
What's it going to look like? So we, give us a view of where we're standing on the street, or standing on the side, or standing in the back. What's the pool going to look like? What's the fence going to look like? What's the finished product going to look like, and the finished shed as well? Because again, that's a key part of our consideration, and applicants do it all the time. I don't know who they use or how they do it.
I don't know either.
Yeah, so this is like an art, so I mean, we did it. I set her up with an architect like this. I mean, he, he called me and said, you know, this is a little bit beyond what, you know, he, what he would want to charge, you know? So if this doesn't have to be stamped by a licensed architect,
No, 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 no.
Then I mean, we're basically just looking for a graphic artist.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to be stamped by.
I mean, I found somebody that could hand draw it, like, cannot be acceptable. Like, that's, like, I'm not the Photoshop, and I just don't.
Yeah. We haven't had hand drawings in the past, but the best thing is, I mean, if you have a picture of the shed, you're able to put it, you know, on the property, so to speak, and again, I don't.
Yeah, so I.
I think, I need, you are, so it's, I don't know how to do that kind of stuff, but I know applicants do it all the time. Gretchen, you know, they use.
I have no idea.
Gretchen might be able to, maybe you can.
Uh, I think Steve has a.
Oh, Steve?
It's basic Photoshop work. If you take a photograph, you can kind of, I think the term is rendering, right? It's not a huge deal, like you can find a $35 an hour guy, probably. If you bring him a picture, say, can you do me a rendering like this, something like that? Just, I hope I'm not out of place just.
No, no, not at all.
Because I kind of do this.
We're searching.
I'm not, I'm not soliciting work in any way, but that's, that's, it's not that complicated. Sorry to interrupt.
So we'd like to hire you.
It's simple, you know, it's, I don't want to.
Would you like the job?
I would, but yeah, sure, but I hope that's out of place.
You just saved us. We thank you.
Seriously, we can talk later.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
I don't know if the.
We just want, we just want, we just want the renderings. And again, most of the time we get them, a lot, but a lot of times we don't, and we tell people that we need them, we get it. And, you know, what we typically do, if there's enough here, is we accept it subject to getting those renderings. And we've done that in the past, so.
Can I ask a question, like, because I want to get it right? If you're looking at it from the road, which is what I imagine you're concerned with, what, like, you're literally going to see a fence and then the top part of a.
Which is great, because then we have, again, we want to, we like, we need a visual of how it's going to look from the road, from the side, well, the sides too, whatever. If you're going around the thing, we, we need to see how it sits up on the property.
Yeah, so this is just another, this was one where it was, the house, you could see it was proposed in the back, I think.
Is it possible to get those to the applicant, you know?
Yeah, yeah, sure, but then like.
Just so you have an idea.
Like, this is kind of like shown again, because it's just a picture of the house, and then.
Why are this one?
Again, they just kind of, this is, this is also, wasn't visible, it was just in the back. We just kind of see, just, you know, just see like, if you were invited to a pool bar, you're like, oh, it'll look like.
So you see how they placed it there, and you can.
Kind of get a visual so that you, you see what it's going to look like.
If I may just say, it does not need to be certified?
Yeah.
So we just need a document if the roles were reversed, and you were, we just need a way to approve this. Looking at visual, and I think you have good guidance.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I'll send these to Gretchen, and then she can just show you what some of these pictures look like.
Yeah, I just bench challenged my name, and I think I should start it maybe way too high.
I think we found our guy.
You may have.
I think we did. He, he, he's looking at these every day here, so I mean, if we can work something out, that's great. I mean, so I'm used to leading people in the direction of you're either getting a PE stamp, an architect's stamp, or an LS stamp. So if that is not required, I mean, yeah, we can go many different directions, so that's.
Yeah, just to give the board an idea.
And obviously, we're going to, we're going to need it staked out too, you know, because we'll.
That will handle, that's all right. We'll make care of that.
So that's.
Another option for you. Dan DiDio, our labor, you're my neighbor, by the way.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Dan DiDio, who's, I know you kids play together, he, he's an architect, and he doesn't have to be a stamp maker, he might be interested in just drawing.
I'm such a good fan.
Dan DiDio?
I'll help you.
What is, what?
Amy DiDio?
Oh, of course, I didn't even think of that.
He's an architect, and even though he doesn't need a stamp, he might be able to use one for.
Yeah, yeah.
He knows what we need.
If he says Avielle, then I would have known it was Avielle instead of right side.
Yeah, Avielle is his dog.
Okay, that's a really, thank you, I should have.
There's another option for you, that's obvious, he can work.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's good, thank you.
Can you get any questions?
Uh, yeah, could you kind of just discuss, so you have it here labeled as pool shed? You mentioned pool house. Can you explain what you're intending to do with that?
Sure, I'm, it's a shed, right, on terms of purposes. It's a shed, basically looking to, one, hide the mechanics of the pool. On the wood side of the, of the shed, get a place for, you know, out of the sun, and maybe store some yard furniture, pool furniture.
Would you like have like bathroom, shower?
No.
You know, changing room, ready, whatever, I mean, you could have a change in it, but not. But, but not like a pool house cabana style?
Yeah, I mean, it's a shed, you know, people might sit in it, but it's mainly going to be to house furniture.
Storage.
Kind of mechanic.
Yeah, and I see that we have some drawings here of the shed.
I was going to ask if they need it here.
Yeah, but it, which is good, and it's helpful, but how about color, that would be good too.
That's supplied by the, by the shed company.
Okay, so if you could get the shed company, just give us a.
Color.
A color, that's awesome, that's very helpful. And then, yeah, obviously, throw that onto the rendering, so we get to see where everything's placed now.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the fence? So you had said, do you still need to see the final fence if I'm not requesting?
Yeah.
And it can be up to six feet?
Yes, in the side and rear yard, it can be up to six feet without needing a special answer.
But not in the front?
In the front, it's four, let me see. Uh, see, fences, gates and walls shall be permitted use not exceeding six feet in height when erected in the required side for rear yard, and that's the setback, so. Nor exceed four feet in height when erected in 50 feet of the front lot line.
Okay, so I could go up to 60 in the front, yes.
Okay. As long as you're not in the 50-foot area.
If you keep it in the same spot as proposed right now, you're good.
We're good to go, okay, good to know.
So that would be something you have to decide, and that we would need those drawings.
Right.
Do we have enough to, two questions. Do we have enough here to move, to ask for a public hearing? And two, if we move towards a public hearing, we only have till January 4th to submit these new drawings?
Well, first thing is, maybe. I have to get, I don't run the show, well, I do run the show, but I have one vote, so.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if we had it, if that was.
In my mind, I think we probably have enough here, assuming we get the renderings. I don't know, the actual thing you need to have nearby is.
Oh, it's the January 4th.
January 4th.
Or at least two weeks before the next meeting, so that would be the time.
Probably looking at February then for that, because you're not going to push somebody to get it done in the next, it's Christmas, and then you have like five days.
Well, you're not going to break ground anyway.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, it's winter, so I doubt, I don't know what your timetable is, but I doubt it's going to be. And the way it works is, is that we have the public hearing, and then, assuming we close the public hearing on, on the date of the first public hearing, we have 62 days to render a decision, but we do it usually by the next week, which is a matter of weeks. So assuming you put it on for February, you'd be looking at a decision in March. So I don't know if that timetable works for you, but with a pool, I would think it would be, but.
You can swing by if.
Well, they're looking, they, they have me on the docket for the first of the season, so April.
Okay, you would work, that would, that would.
I have one question. What's the footprint, what are the measurements on the footprint of the shed? It looks like it says 16 to 18 feet?
I think it's 12 by 18.
12 by 18, correct, yeah, 12 by 18.
12 by 18, okay.
Any other questions, concerns?
I mean, if I can make a miracle happen, we'll get it in, but otherwise.
I don't know, I mean, it's up to you guys what you want to do, but I think if you come to us in February, you're going to be, have your resolution by.
Okay.
Probably March, and you should be set for April, come the day. So, anyway, it's up to you, if you want to get here sooner, that's.
Well, with the exception that, well, we have to make a motion to schedule the public hearing to a particular date. So we'll have to decide if we're making the public hearing to be January or February.
Ouch, we could always continue it in January.
Yeah, that's true. She wants to do that, we, well, let's, but why don't we, we're getting ahead of ourselves right now.
Yeah, let's, let's see.
Why don't we, why don't we just see? To me, I think there's enough here, assuming we get this additional information to accept the application and set up a public hearing. What does the rest of the gang have to say?
I can confirm.
Alright, alright, so I make a motion that we accept the application subject to receiving the additional information, the renderings that we spoke of. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Alright, now, that brings us now to what they would like us to put you on for. We can put you on for January, and if you don't make it in January, as Gretchen said, we can continue. If we don't get the information, we can open and then continue it.
Yeah, okay, are we just, if we don't have the information, then we'll have nothing new to present in January, so we're going to skip over, correct?
Right, yeah, but simply open it, you don't even have to be here, we'll.
What I would suggest, what I would suggest is that if we schedule it for January and you don't have anything, we'll keep it on the agenda, and take any of the neighbors who want to come, you know, if you provide notice to them, we'll let them make any comments they want to make or guess, or maybe you can, I don't even get anybody to comment. And then we'll just, if, if you don't have it by January, we'll continue it on February, okay?
Gretchen? Okay.
When would you like to sit down?
When, oh, is it going to be continued?
Right.
Let me know at least a week before, and just send me an email, say, hey, can we continue it? We don't, we don't have this.
Or, or alternative number two, we're simply putting it on for February, which we've done. We have, you know, you can skip over, and we can't really put it on in February if that.
And so leaving that all up to you.
I don't think I have a preference if the end date is March, but it sounded like you were saying your proposal was to put it on and just handle a public hearing.
I, I was just saying that's, it's an option. I don't really mind one way or the other.
So does, in, in this township, do we send out the public hearing notices? Yeah? Okay, so.
Just sign, send it out, put it in paper.
Yes, so that's why, I'm trying to clarify everything tonight.
And I'll send.
I think it makes sense to go to February, that's.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think that's the case. So everybody, do you provide a list of who needs to be moved?
I'll send an email with all the instructions, any of the right things.
She is awesome.
I know, I finally moved in with her into the email chain, so I see, I'm on draw on the same page. Thank you.
Alright, great. So we'll put, any idea with February?
21st, I just set the limit.
Oh, okay, February 21st. Alright, is that a date you guys can make, 20, February 21st?
Yes.
Alright, so we'll put it on for the February 21st, and get us that information, and we'll see you.
Thank you.
At the public hearing on that day.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Would you like us to send you any of those renderings, or you kind of have.
You can, or.
I wouldn't hurt, I, I would say, yeah, please do, like, give us anything that leads us in the right direction.
Sure, no problem, yeah. And thanks for the recommendation, I didn't even think about that.
You also have a backup, so we may.
Yeah, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, okay, very good. Thank you.
Alright.
Oh, the certification authorization.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So you have to sign something allowing me to represent you, and it needs to be notarized. So it was, it's at the bottom of the application, correct?
It's a, it's a form that she's already got, you already did it, so if you come in, you can just do the bottom part and have either Joe or Kimberly.
Sure.
I'll say that helps, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have some housekeeping to do on this application, and the first thing is, Seeker and our council is suggested that this is a type two under 617.512, construction and expansion or replacement of a minor accessory to residence residential structures, which includes swimming pools, fences, storage sheds. So that seems, and it's on your cheat sheet here. You guys had it?
Yeah.
Okay.
She sent it in.
Yeah. It makes sense to me. Any discussion? If it's rated, so, alright, so I make a motion that we consider this a type two, section under Seeker, under 617.512, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. opposed, alright. So, and then it looks like referrals go to just.
Just the, just the town planning board.
Just the planning board, okay, that's nice of you to say. And, okay.
You guys, would you like this at after the public hearing?
Yeah, I, we like to do, I like to do it after, because I get to hear the public and see what their concerns are, and that gives me more information to see, to look and see around, you know, what's concerns, and so, some people like to do it before, I like to do it after.
Then we, you know, sometimes you like to put a point contact person, just in case there's.
No, no, absolutely, we're going to do that.
So the point contact person, it used to be that the ZDA would, member would draft the resolutions. We've switched that so that I draft the resolutions based on your deliberations at the prior meeting. And we kind of designate like a point contact person, usually the person who conducts the site visits, and, you know, if you have any questions or anything, you can.
You know she's looking at you.
No, no, I'm explaining, I'm just explaining.
I know, but this is a good one, because it's, you know, fairly simple. You'll be on board for a couple of months, and you have to see how things go.
And it happens.
Fantastic counsel, so I will put you down as the point contact person, how's that? Alright, Brian? Okay, so I think that takes care of me. The next application is, is it Piscorita?
Just Secrata.
Piscorita?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. I will put a fanatic here. So are you, are you David?
Yeah.
Alright, step up, and I think you have an idea of what we need you to do, is just walk us through your application.
Sure.
Assuming there's enough here, well.
Yeah, I apologize for my architect not being able to be here, but he's got a personal thing.
Okay.
He wanted to call in, but I don't, I don't, I think I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So yeah, so what we're looking for is an area variance for 389 square feet. There's an unenclosed porch roof, that's about, it's 396 square feet, and the cost of my other structure is on 389 square feet short, assuming the area average.
And you also have, this will be the fourth accessory structure, so.
It is.
You'll have three, and some new varies for that as well.
But that's planning, or?
That's here.
Well, that's here also, okay, good. Yeah, so it's one, I need to pull up the second structure. That's my home, that's the view from the street.
Okay.
This is a home, my home, everything there. There's a studio, small studio with a pool, which is, I think, approved. And what we're looking for now is this unenclosed porch roof. So the four structures are, I've got an existing barn, a little shed over here, my home, and the studio roof. Those are, so the four, the three structures are the barn, I guess, the small shed, and the studio, and then this will be the floor structure.
And similar to the last application, do you have color renderings of what this is going to look like? And how it will sit on the property?
Yeah, we have full elevation.
Right, yeah, but do you have any elevations?
We have, I have pictures of the exist, of the, of the studio that we can supply, and that we can make or render, sure.
Yeah, and, and it's similar to the last applicant, and this is very common, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with it.
So the, the one thing that I saw that was lacking, it's a nice application, is, again, common, is our renderings showing the structure as it appears on the property. So we have an idea of what it's going to look like, well, we have a hopefully good idea of what's going to look like when it's finished.
Sure.
And so we can consider how it's going to change the.
Yeah, it should, yeah.
Property, the neighborhood, the, you know.
Yeah, yeah, this is, just for a little history on, right, so this is a, this is a three-acre plot that 30 years ago was carved out of a 85-acre plot that we purchased. Since then, I've purchased all 85 acres, so I've got everything around this except for my neighbor Matt Dimitz has a piece to mine, or, other than that, everything else is mine. But yeah, we can make a rendering, and I can also include an actual photo of the studio building. It'll be the exact same siding, exact same color, exact same.
That'd be great.
And like I said, this is unenclosed, so you, from the street, you'll be looking through it. And what Boyd did was he took hair, and took these angles of his roof. And what Lloyd did was he took care of, took these angles and his roof lines, so that from the street, as you're looking through, you'll look through it rather than see the roof line. He took great care of it and went through it. It's a pretty nice structure. It's made of CLT and blue wax. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that product? Yeah, I'm a steel contractor in New York and a professional engineer also in New York City. Although, we use this as a sort of, it's not a new product, but it's kind of new to the United States. It's very green and very susceptible, durable and sustainable. So that's what we use to construct this and it really fits in, I think, with the environment very good.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So the steel you're talking about?
There's no steel, it's all wood.
All wood?
Yeah, it's absolutely true. We erect these panels of wood.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the CLTs are cross laminated timber, so what it takes is two by sixes and it lays them this way, and then it lays them this way. And then it cross laminates them to a depth of whatever you need for the strength for the spans that you're ready to need. And then the walls, we're using the walls as for the lateral resistance. And those are three ply CLT and the roof is six ply CLT. Come out and see it, it's really.
We will.
It's gorgeous. No, it's really, no, really, it's cool.
And at some point, after, usually after the public hearing when you come out, we expect, we'll just need you to stake it out and all that.
Oh, it's all, it's.
It's done?
Well, that's not all.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no, but the footings and everything are all there for.
Oh, okay, alright, so we'll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I was curious, just can you actually, would you be able to see it from the road? Because it seemed like.
You could, you, a barrel.
Just, oh, it could be kind of like.
It'd be way back there.
No, it's actually right behind the house. The studio is, the studio presently is directly behind the house.
Okay, so it's good.
And then this is directly behind the house, but from, if you're coming from the south, you would see it. You wouldn't see the, I don't think you see the shed, the porch roof from the north, but you do see the studio. It's, you want to see some photos or no?
Sure. And the more information we have, the better. It gives us a better chance to evaluate. So we always look for more information versus less. And anything you want to submit, you can always give us additional information, which is great. Make it part of the record and helps us out.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. So that's the shed. I mean, that's just New York. And then this is, that pad where the enclosed, unenclosed roof will be. And my pool is right in front of that. So you can't, you can't see the road from here. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
That's great. Why don't you, if you could, submit that to Gretchen, so we have it as part of the record, that'd be great. Yeah, any angles we can get, the more, the better. So anything you have, you can get it to Gretchen and make it part of the record, that's beautiful. So it really is, is the case with a lot of folks, it's just additional renderings that we need.
Yeah, that's, that's what, where the house is, you can barely see it. Yeah, we can actually take these and probably, I'm sure, go remember this one.
Okay, great.
So there it is there, right? That is the three acre. Here.
Okay. And you've got.
All the rest is.
All around it, that's yours?
Yeah, all the way down here, all the way around.
Any board members have any questions, concerns? Any additional information? Alright, I think there's enough here to accept your application, so I've accepted. I'm going to make a motion we accept it, subject to receiving the additional information, the rendering. So I make that motion and do I have a second?
Same.
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Alright, so your application's been accepted. Is January seventeenth?
Yep.
It is the seventeenth, okay? You'll be able to be here?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I think you need the renderings by the fourth, is that what I heard before?
Yeah, two weeks, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Gretchen sends you the pictures tomorrow when I'll have Lloyd render up something with the pictures and Photoshop it.
Oh, thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Same, same view, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, let's see.
Gretchen, do you have a list of who I have to send stuff to? Do you have to send a list?
For the public hearing?
For the public hearing?
I'll send you an email.
Is it people within somebody feet or something?
Five hundred?
One neighbor.
Foot radius.
Yeah, two neighbors.
But I'll send you one.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so Kim, getting to the Seeger issue, your suggestion is, under six seventeen five C, six seventeen, five seventeen, granting of an area variance for a single family residence?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds fine by me. And do I have any discussion on that?
No.
See that on the cheat sheet, okay. So, alright, I make a motion that we consider this a type two action under six seventeen point five seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Alright. So referrals to the planning board. Okay, let's see, what else do we have? That's like about it. Yeah, would you like to do that? Catherine has graciously volunteered. Wonderful. Okay. Next up, Dave's Tree Service. You two up for mayor? Mr. Kreminski.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think we've done this once or twice.
Times.
Yeah, you don't have to repeat. So just, you know, did you just take us through what you're proposing?
So this is actually a sign application for Dave's Tree Service.
Not hiding anything.
Yes.
You can't see the signs, so you need to have it closer to you. And so, application for Dave's Tree Service. It's actually, probably two years ago, application was made to the planning board for site plan for Dave to construct a new shop for his tree service on the property. And with that, there were actually two applications for signs that were previously considered by the planning board. Actual sign permits were issued. But since then, Dave has, Dave has looked at the location of the sign and finds that, and it's quite evident that zoning regulations require twenty foot setback off of the property line. And maintaining that twenty foot setback, you lose visibility of the sign just because of the nature of the site. And so, so this is an area variance application for, it's only one, one variance required and that's setback. Twenty feet required and seven feet is being added from the applicant. I actually, today, I took some photos. Did you pick that other?
I just, it was just the two, it was just actually the sheets that you sent.
Yeah, and so it could go to sheet number two.
Sheet number two, sure.
I originally submitted the site plan because, you know, I tried to include.
Yeah, we haven't gotten these, right, the photographs?
No, I just took them today.
Okay.
And so.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and so what I did was I actually took photographs from different views and I was trying to just reinforce, you know, the idea of having, you know, a certain amount of setback for, for the sign to, you know, to maintain visibility. And in doing that, I also took analysis of this nine G. And nine G has a very wide right of way. It's actually, in this, in this location, it's ninety-seven feet wide, which is almost twice of what a right of way is, you know, for a standard road. You know, typically it's fifty foot right of way. And so what it does is it pushes it back quite a bit. And then through the photos, if Kim can, is there a way you can zoom in on some of those photos, Kim? That first photo is the sign and that sign meets the requirements of code for dimensions and area of the sign. And so, like, here's, this, this was, that first photo number one is a great photo. So you can see, you see the utility pole on the left and then Dave actually has his sign pretty close to where the proposed.
I was going to ask you, that's where the proposed sign would be?
Yeah, that's, that's generally.
Be a state of force and we'll be able to state.
Yeah, and so that's generally the location. And so I was standing in the entrance right now, and so you can see I was looking for it. And if you look past those billboard signs, you can see the car right there. And so that's very close, it's only a couple hundred feet away. And you can see, you'll just be able to get visibility at this one location. And then also, I just wanted to point out in photo number one, you can see that as part of the improvement for the, for the site. We have site drainage, we had to pick up drainage from Route nine. And so right on the, right on the north side, Dave's tree sign, there's a swell there and then there's a swell that it brings it around. And then we have drainage going underneath, underneath the, the entrance. And so there's like a little peninsula right there where that sign can sit. And so the pole, where the utility pole is, that represents about, and I staked it out in the field. They staked the twenty foot offset from the road boundary. Where that utility pole, that's twenty feet right there. And so the sign would have to be on the, you know, like on the northwest side of that pole. And, and so, once again, and so if you're, this, this particular location is if you're exiting Dave's Tree Service, it's on the left-hand side, right? If you look on the, if it's, if you're on the right-hand side now, if you look at photo number two, you can see there's, there's really no, first of all, the entrance is very close to the property line. And so not only do you have, would you have an offset from the road line, it would also be, we'll just call it the southerly boundary of Dave's property. And so there's really, there's no possibility to have a sign located on the other side of, or the driveway entrance. And so then, once again, here's another shop, you can see the swell, the water laying in there, and the utility pole. And so it's, so it's generally in that location.
So Marcus, property line is that south portion of the driveway?
Right, yes, it is. You have just, just on the other side of that entrance, right where the curve begins, that's it, that's a property line right there. And so, Kim, if you could just slide down. So then, photo number three, I took one from across the road just to give you an idea. So then you get, you get a good idea of the geography. You see to the no left turn sign, how it goes up, and then there's a swell just below that. And then there's Dave's sign and then it goes back down to another swell. So it's really a limited location where you can put this. And, you know, then finally, photo number four, right, it's just, you know, it's just, you know, looking out from, and I wanted to show that drainage is also on the south side, so there's really no location. But it was kind of interesting when I, like, I did an analysis of, you know, since the right of way is so wide in that area, it's ninety-seven feet. You know, if you consider from the center line, you went twenty-five feet over and you set that as a right of way, the offset to our proposed sign would be greater than twenty feet. You know, it's just, you know, typically what you would see. And then, and then finally, just because, you know, Seth and I have been involved in other applications along Route nine G, the next one to come up is, like, we've done an inventory of signs along nine G. And ninety-seven percent of the signs do not meet the twenty foot setback.
And that would be great if you could give us that information. I figured you had it from other applications, so you always ask for that, you know, no matter where you are, wherever the corridor is. And so if you can give us an idea of the signs, like the IXL sign, the other signs.
Sure.
You know, where they are, the, not only just their location, their size and things like that. I know you have to meet the size requirement.
Right.
And the only last thing you can further this before is, you know, if you could make a rendering showing the sign as it appears on the property, where that, where that little sign is, and see if you could plunk the proposed sign.
So actually, I had Dave, Dave went to this, you see Dave's signs everywhere.
Yes.
So Dave has had a great relationship with the sign maker. He made a sign, it's just a vinyl sign. So we're going to post it, it'll take photographs, and that's as realistic as.
That's great, that'd be wonderful.
And so that's, that's, I'll provide that information for you. Just out of curiosity, how far does one need to be from the utility pole? Does that factor in? Uh, there's, so it's overhead and down, and so that's, that serves power. And so there's, you know, it's just, we'll be offset enough so you can access the pole. But there's no, as far as I know, there's, there's no regulatory requirement for the offset. I didn't know.
I don't know. That's a good question. Any other questions, concerns? Alright. I, you know, again, it's a nice application, the only thing, you know, we'll get those photographs, the additional ones.
Yes.
And then if you give us the rendering, well, show us the sign as it's, you know, the mock-up.
Yeah, mock-up.
Which is great. And send that to us, so you can get that done by the fourth or?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Alright, so I'm going to make a motion that we accept the application, subject to the additional information. The renderings, getting those photographs that have been talked about. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye? Alright, so you're on for the seventeenth? If you can get that information to Gretchen by the fourth, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I'll pay the two and one split.
Okay.
And we usually ask, is this going to be on lighting? Any lighting on?
Okay.
No lighting.
No lighting, okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Seeger retirement, our council suggested this is a type two action under six seventeen point five twenty-two installation of traffic control devices for finding systems, streets, roads and highways. This would make sense to me, so anybody have any concerns or questions?
I got a question, does the state have any say on this? Because that's a state highway, do they?
So I don't think this, we probably wouldn't go to the states. We'll refer to Dutchess County line.
So, anyway, referrals if we need to get a vote on.
We're out of there right of way. And as, like, the next application in my office that Seth's presenting, you can't have, the DOT is not allowing any signage at all in the right of way. So we're out of there right of way, it's on private property.
Okay. That's curious. So did we, how far did we get here?
We were talking about referrals.
Okay.
We did Seeger. Was it in the legal?
We didn't do the motion. It was us doing the motion, so I'll make the motion again, that we accept this application as a type two under section six seventeen point five twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Alright, so that's done. And you said referrals obviously to the planning board, Dutchess County Planning and the WAC. Okay.
And planning boards both the town and Dutchess County. You indicated that, just for clarity purposes.
Alright, is there anything, I don't think there's anything else here. No, it should be up.
Nope, just.
It's part of that person. I guess it's my turn, so throw me down. Alright. Alright, so that takes care of all the new applications. And they consist of public hearings and the first case on it is case number one thousand forty-four, Brian Williams. And it's my understanding that Williams has not supplied the additional information, the more exact measure. And it's my understanding that Mr. Williams has not supplied the additional information, the more exact measurements. Okay, so-
And just make sure no one's here for Mr. Williams' application?
Okay.
So I'd make a motion just to continue it.
Yeah, yeah, make a motion to continue it. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll put it on for the next meeting and hopefully January seventeenth and hopefully we get the information. And that leads us to the second public hearing, which is the case number one thousand twenty-eight, Ruby's. And I think I know who's here for that. So if you could come on up and, do we have anybody here for that? Well, I guess you're anybody, yeah.
Somebody's gotta say that, you know?
Yeah, right. All right, so Seth, take it away.
You typically want to get all of our application material in before your submission deadlines, understanding that you go to a third meeting before you make your decision. Figured it might be appropriate, how we received some information from Dutchess County Planning that we'd like to discuss tonight. So we've included some information in this packet. And this packet also updates all of the plans and documents that corresponded with Brian's letter. So just wanted to provide that to you this evening, so you have a complete application as well as some additional.
Okay. Yeah, the, we wanted to, I'm sure, I was gonna ask about the interesting, like, Dutchess County Department of Planning. Just for the record, we did receive a response from Dutchess County dated December fifteenth, where they had some concerns about the, for the sign. And so I guess you want to address those.
Yeah, I have included their letter in this packet. And then I've also included a few other things, just some additional information. I do note that there is a new board member that I don't know has been presented to about this application. So I'll take it from the board's lead on whether you want the full rundown of the entire project or abbreviated, or we can get right to the point, so.
Give us the clinical version, not that I reuse in high school or anything.
Sorry, so we can probably use the presentation.
Okay, I think this is the one that I have.
Yeah, yep. I just, there was one error in it, so I had updated that. And then I'll provide a digital as well, so that everybody has that. But, so Seth Stipple with Mark Muntz, EPLSBC, here this evening to represent Ruby's nine G properties and their sign application. The sign application is somewhat complex. There is a large amount of existing signage that was on the site and there is an equally amount of new signage proposed. One thing that just want to note right off the bat, our proposal is a reduction in overall site signage from what had existed. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So just for anybody who's new to this, this is a three-phase development approach. Ruby's has been working on this with years. Rezone this piece of property, this specific piece, about a hundred and forty acres for Office Research Park. So the intention, and that's the only Office Research Park zone in the town of Rhinebeck. So the intention here is to have a sort of a Office Research or Industrial Park located on this site. So the three-phase approach is to first remove Ruby's Subaru services from the village and relocate them to this site. That project is under construction. The second phase would be to relocate Chrysler Jeep Dodge and Ford's service operations to this site as well. In order to do the phase two, there was a lane widening that has also been done. You'll notice that as you drive down nine G now. So the site is preparing for, you know, the phase two. A development of any of the remaining balance under existing zoning code would take place as a phase three, yet to be determined. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, phase one, which is highlighted here, you can see the area that will be used for phase one is that area for Ruby's Subaru. That is currently under construction. Next slide, please. I'll skip what has occurred in our timeline. We took a little bit of, like about a year off here to try to work with DOT on sign locations and some other things. And we have kick-started that back up to what's before you now. In addition to that, we went through a couple of planning approvals and amendments as well. So there's been a bit of a timeline which brings us to the present. So this sign application has, you know, a few types of signs. There's existing freestanding monument and billboard signs located on the road. And we are proposing to remove the two billboard signs and the existing freestanding monument sign in place of one freestanding monument sign. The, of the visible signs along Route nine G, the, the existing is a hundred and eighty-nine square feet and we're proposing about a hundred and fourteen square feet. That's a forty percent reduction in visible signage along Route nine G. So if you could just throw out a little bit. In addition, we're also proposing some signage internals of the property. There is signage that is specific for directional on the building for some branding for Ruby's and Subaru, as well as some indications of where the, any of the clients would go. And then we're also proposing some safety and directional signs internals of the property. None of those signs are visible from Route nine G. They're all internal. Next slide, please. So when we were here previously, we had proposed the old freestanding monument sign. We have redeveloped that to just a new type of sign and a new type of lighting. All of that is documented. The changes here are really that it's the way that the sign is constructed. This is a, the sign on the right, the new sign, is easily adjusted should there be changes over time to any development and allows for space for future tenants as well as the phase one and phase two that I just recently discussed. Next slide, please. Relative to the building signage, the old signage remains the same. There are only two minor adjustments. Ruby's has been changed from what was their Ruby's red and automotive ink logo to a more standard Subaru blue color. Square footage is approximately the same. And then the only other change is that you'll notice on the far right is the old, there was an express with a service underneath it. We're no longer using both of those, there will just be an express sign as you see on the right. So it's a reduction in overall signage on the building. Lastly, directional signage, mostly safety and internal. So telling people where to go at certain points and why. So there's a small reduction in the number of handicap signs and really that's the only change here. We've also detailed exactly their square footage, so it is possible to calculate that for the zoning variance for the zoning administrator. So the proposed freestanding monument sign, it's double-sided, it's a little more than fifty-six square feet per side. So the total is a hundred and thirteen square feet, that will be the only sign on Route nine G. Due to some complexity of the frontage of this site and the location of the driveway entrance, the old sign used to be located right in the center of the entrance. DOT required us to reconfigure that entrance and that sign location is no longer viable. So we need to propose a new sign location. One of the things that has come up with that is we spent about a year trying to get information from DOT on whether it's possible to go ahead and place a sign in the right of way. We went out to the site, we did a site visit with this board and everyone kind of said, you know, maybe is there an alternative? And when we looked at it, there really isn't because the DOT's real estate division is no longer allowing acquisition or leasing of property in the right of way. So we have to put it into the property. Here, if our boundary line, as Mark mentioned, the right of way is wide on Route nine G, the boundary line for the property is right here. There's a hill here and then this side drops off into a weapon. We're proposing the sign location here so that it's visible in both directions and it's on the property. The variance requests for this are that obviously the sign is larger than the freestanding monument sign by code. And then also the sign is proposed one foot from the property boundary. The requirement is twenty feet. The reason for that is to go any further back, you would not have visibility. And there's also in the ORP zone for this specific use, based on the negotiations with the town board for the rezoning, a two-hundred-foot mandated natural buffer. So if you move this twenty feet back, you would then have to clear out a large majority of that buffer to create visible sight lines. And that's kind of counterintuitive to, I think, what the intention of the rezoning was for this specific use. Next slide, please. Oh, can you just back one up? Also, the maximum height is six feet. This sign with the base is proposed at ten feet six inches, so there is also a variance for that. So here is what the old signs look like, you know, the stamp sign and as well as the two boat woods. All existing signage is proposed to be removed. So again, these are the wall signs, I'm not gonna get too much into detail here. You do have a requirement in the code that limits the amount and square footage of these signs. We are exceeding the number of those signs, that's the variance request here and the square footage. Again, these are internal kind of branding signs, some required by the Subaru and also some that just help indicate where customers should go. And, you know, so we're looking for four wall signs, I believe two is the maximum per code and they're forty-seven point oh seven square feet. And that square footage is based on your linear footage of facade, front facade, and so we do exceed that as well. So together, the wall signage and the freestanding monument sign are a hundred and sixty point eight three square feet. The code requirement is thirty square feet maximum, so we're asking for a hundred and thirty point eight three square foot variance. This was previously building-mounted signage on the site. Just want to like to compare what was there and what is proposed, so everyone's aware. Lastly, directional signage. Most of this directional signage is required, like stop signs, handicap signs, do not enter signs, things that are necessary. The maximum allowable signage for, in the code, is two square feet for directional signage. A stop sign is larger than two square feet and needs to be larger than two square feet, so it's recognizable. So those kind of things are what we're talking about, we're talking about variance for the directional signage. You know, we also then have a proposed directional signage because we have an intersection here. Customers will be coming in and arriving and pulling into this, this front waiting area. Once they're there, the customer is no longer involved in car movements. Ruby's employees bring the car into whatever doors it needs to go in for servicing or for parking for later. Once the car is done, it's returned to here and the customers go out. All other traffic, that would be deliveries, inventory, anything else, will circulate around the service track. So at this location, we need to tell people where to go. And if we could just go to the next slide quickly?
Is this just, this is employee parking?
That's a visitor-
Oh, visitor?
Visitor parking, yeah, yeah. And so this on the left is the sign that was located at that area. So you can see that it's necessary to have some sort of directional signage here at that intersection. So if we just go back to that, yeah.
Oh, go back to?
Yeah, just back to, yeah, thank you. So, you know, these directional signages, just to summarize, there are ten of them that are over the allowable two square feet. So that math builds what is the requirement for our variance. And that's very well summarized by the zoning administrator, so I won't give you too much into detail. This was a breakdown of the exact code section that each sign needs a variance from. And this is our summary of it. I'd prefer to go to the next slide, which is the zoning administrator summary because it's much more concise. So the zoning administrator provided us with a determination letter. So the first variance that they have noted is that there's an area variance for additional square feet of a hundred and thirty twenty-three square feet where the allowable is thirty, there's the hundred and sixty number that we talked about before. There's an area variance for an additional three signs over the two that are allowed. There's an area variance for thirteen point one seven square feet for the directional signage and the safety signage that we just mentioned. There's also a variance requirement for the four point five inches above the six-foot height limit for the freestanding monument sign. Additionally, because the freestanding monument sign is needed to be closer to the property line, we're also asking for a nineteen-foot variance from the twenty-foot that's required. And lastly, the lighting, which I actually didn't point out, which I can go back to if you'd like to, is the lighting for the building signage is at eighteen point two, eighteen feet two inches. And the maximum fixture mounting height for any fixture in the town of Rhinebeck is fifteen feet. So because of the location of the signs on the building front facade and the type of lighting, we need a variance for that as well. So that's the summary for the variances, next slide. So what we also did is an analysis of Route nine G and nine, inventory of all the signs. So, next slide. So these are all of the signs located on Route nine and nine G, as well as at the intersection. You can, all of the signs have IDs and then the map that's on the left indicates where those signs are located. So it helps you, give you an idea as well as the tax number. It tells you what type of sign they are and then it provides whether they're lit or they're not, or if they're double-sided or they're not. And then it approximates their square footage, actually measured all of these signs. So, next slide. So the takeaway for me from just digesting that information, and you could look at it and come up with a bunch of different numbers, is that I, some of these sites have more than one sign. But each sign ID number, which is specific to a tax parcel, I looked at twenty-nine of them. No freestanding signs surveyed are twelve square feet or less. Twenty-three of the signs are greater than thirty square feet and six of them are less than thirty square feet. Eighty percent of the freestanding signs then exceed thirty square feet. And twenty-eight of the twenty-nine signs, so ninety-seven percent, are located closer than twenty feet to the property line. Multiple sign IDs have two signs as well. And we only looked at the freestanding monument signs, we didn't even look at the building signage for all of these parcels as well. So it's just a quick breakdown of, you know, the inventory of what exists and kind of what, you know, just to give everybody an idea of the inventory. So then we have our plans, which we can certainly go through, but I think I'd like to skip to, you know, some of the other items. So we did receive, and we received previously with our application, a comment letter from DC Planning. You know, DC Planning made some suggestions about proposed sign locations as well as the square footage. So I think what I, what I'd like to address first is the square footage of the signage. We're proposing a reduction of overall visible signage along Route nine G with this application. So I believe that when, whoever was doing the analysis for DC Planning was only looking at potentially the code requirement and the proposed sign, not taking into account what already exists and the improvements that will come to the road as well. The, one of the other things that was mentioned is that it was proposed that, maybe we could go to the next slide? Actually, that one's fine, that's fine, check, we can go back there. It was proposed by DC Planning that the optimum location would be here, on the south side of the entrance, in the DOT right of way and in a New York State DEC wetman buffer. And furthermore, if you had to put that on our property, we would be in a pond or in a weapon. So, you know, just taking a quick look at that letter, just wanted to provide that information. We also are providing probably ten emails of correspondence with the New York State DOT. So both myself and ownership Scott Hutchins had contacted and tried to work with DOT about obtaining the ability to place a sign in the right of way. And very clearly through this email train, you will see that the real estate specialist essentially said, have a nice day and that won't be possible anymore. They're even considering not allowing utilities in the right of way and that's a difficult thing. So it puts, you know, applicants in a difficult position about placement of lights, or, excuse me, of signs or lights or any utilities. So I guess in summary, you know, overall, as I mentioned, you know, this proposal is a reduction in overall signage from what existed. What existed was two hundred and forty-one square feet of total signage, what's proposed is two hundred. That's a seventeen percent reduction across the site. Visible signage for Route nine G, again, there was a hundred and ninety before, there's about a hundred and fourteen now. That's a forty percent reduction in visible signage along Route nine G. That's a 40% reduction in visible signage along Route 9G.
I think, can I ask a question? Or do you want to bring it to the board first?
Absolutely.
I think one of the comments from D.C., Duchess County Planning Board was, in addition to what you had said, but they also said like a lower sign or, I can try to pull that up if I have it. Let's see. They mentioned a wider lower sign. Do you have any comments on that?
So, you know, the proposed sign is double-sided and that allows for visibility. Anything lower becomes difficult with the approach and the visibility from Route 9G. There are some rock outcrops and various topography as you come to the north. One of the things that I took a quick look at is, you know, they, they said that the sign is too big, the lettering is too big. Like standard for visible signs, the speed limit is also 55 miles an hour on Route 9G. The standard for visibility from 500 feet for minimum height of lettering is 20 inches, recommended. For readability, it's 50 inches. For maximum impact, it's 100 inches per letter. The sign we're proposing is 10 inches for the largest possible sign. We also have three businesses that we're proposing to relocate. Subaru, the Chrysler Jeep Dodge, as well as Ford. Those are just the ones that we know of at this time for phase one and phase two. So those consume a considerable amount of space on that signage to be readable and at that location. And then we also will need a little bit of space for future expansion. So that's where, you know, the height of our sign comes into play. We also have a base on the sign, the two-foot base, stone base, with some plantings around the proposed. You know, that is also to help with the elevation. There's a hill at that location and if you were to lower that sign, you would definitely impact the visibility.
Thank you.
If I may, who, who has filed a jurisdiction?
So with the Duchess County, so the Duchess County Planning Board offers a recommendation or they offer a comment. The Z.B.A. does not have to accept that comment, but they would need a supermajority vote to overrule. Not overrule, but to, well, I guess.
Overruled.
So, yeah, override. So in this case, the board would need to vote at least for, if they do, for the height variance.
For the fight. But to me, I mean, I, I think I agree with Seth that while well-intentioned, a letter from the county is from a person who's just looking at the code, who never visited the site, has no idea about real world conditions and the fact that it is a 55 mile per hour zone. You need to have a big sign so people can see it because if they have a small sign, they're going to slow down and cause problems.
I agree with you.
And, and our, our, our code is, our code needs to be changed, but hopefully that'll be done, you know, soon. But as we continue to have these issues along these commercial corridors where cars go at a high rate of speed and the signs that are allowed are so small that they're useless. And I think they create a danger in and of themselves. So while I think it's well-intentioned, I just don't think it's realistic. That's my only personal opinion.
How many, just so, how many total locations do you have in this area?
Does Rugy say?
Yeah.
That'd be a better answer from Scott, but I'm pretty sure it's Ford, is the.
Three in Reinbeck and one in over, one in over Phase 9.
So, and everybody's familiar with, you know, the legacy of this business and good standing in the community and I guess in the tax base and.
And taking an old decrepit, out-of-use industrial site and making it useful again.
Yeah.
And totally improving the entrance and taking down the old buildings, putting up new buildings and just making it.
The signs are aesthetically pleasing, they're trying their best. I mean, if you look at, if I may, I was here interviewing when you presented and I, I mean, this is, this is now a case study and a resource for all signage in the area for any applicant, I mean, just by the inventory we've done, so. I don't know if we're stepping, my opinion, we need to another way to make this.
We can.
Yeah.
The one thing that I think I didn't hear a clairvoyant, Seth, was I was going to ask for, I talked to Kim about this, this afternoon, we're talking about what's the illuminated sign going to look like, which you used to.
Yeah, I apologize, I skipped over that.
Well, that's important, but it's good.
Also included in your package because it was requested is a rendering of the sign at night. And I wasn't able to get that to Kim for display here, but you all have it.
Yep.
In, in this package and it's been submitted now. But, you know, this is approximately what the light would look like at night. I also just want to mention that the sign will only be lit during business hours, which are approximately 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So there is a rendering, this is an actual existing sign locally, and then this is the rendering of what it may appear like at night.
Does it go dim or?
It will be off at night.
Well, it has to go off by, what, 10 block, whatever the code is.
There is it.
There is a cutoff that it has to do with.
I suspect that you're going to have the Ford and the Chrysler, once that happens to that sign right next to the slide.
Yeah, they're just panels.
Yes.
Replaceable panels.
Yep.
I mean, having been out to the site, I totally agree with the placement and the constraints that you have and the challenges that you have with that sign. A smaller sign would not do the job. And that's the best place by far. Give them, give them the lens.
I agree. I was out there too, so. That was, again, maybe if this person, and I'm not trying to criticize, but if the Duchess County person had been on the site, they might have had a different recommendation, I think.
I think he's brand new.
Okay. And again, I say it's well-intentioned and, you know, it doesn't make sense on what level, but you got to go out to the site and see what the real world is like. It makes a big difference. Anyway.
Does the board have any discussions? You've made your points clear for, I can draft up a decision based on certainly the monument sign that's visible from 9. Do you have, 9G is, I apologize. Any discussions on the internal signs and?
No, they all make sense. And, and first of all, they're required, some of them. And they make sense and they look better than what was there. I know the stamp sign is all over there, the building's all over there, but I, I have no, my vote would be to, to grant all of the variance requests. Make a lot of sense.
I think all the internal signage is.
Yeah, it's got to be there. And it has to be there for safety purposes.
Yep.
So traffic control and all that.
Yeah, it'll be visible from the road.
It's not going to be visible from the road, but it's crucial for people, you know, going in. There's going to be a lot of activity and it'll probably increase over time as, you know, more, you know, you get the Ford, you know, people in there and you get the Chrysler people in there.
That's it.
Yeah, well. So I, I think it all makes a whole lot of sense and it was very well done. But that's just my opinion.
Okay.
So you have your direction, I think.
Yep, I think I have a good idea.
Would you like me to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay. I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have 62 days to make a decision. Hopefully we'll do it probably by the next meeting, which is easy for me to say since Kim will be writing it up.
Typically, the board visits the site after the public hearing, right?
Yeah.
I just wanted to see if that was still necessary or?
I don't, at least for me, I can't, I'm just going to speak for myself because I was out there before, so I don't need to, I mean, I don't know what Catherine feels, but these two fellows might, I don't know.
I was out there for Kim.
You were?
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay. All right, well, well, I have a decision, hopefully, I'm sure we will by, by the 17th January.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, that's it for the public hearing. So let's go to the old business. The first one is that David LePlante, and I don't know, Catherine, did you have, or is it Richard?
I was looking at him.
No, let me just grab it here, so you can contact first once.
Catherine.
Who's that?
Catherine.
Oh, Catherine, ah, ah. Sure can give responsibilities.
Trying to get by.
Yep. So watch like a lot of you guys. We're getting.
Just stepped out.
Good stuff. Oh, yeah, enough. So you want to wait? Let's wait.
Yeah, let's wait.
All right, so we'll take a quick break.
So before we, yeah, before we, so Joe's going to be recusing himself to LePlante and Chrysler.
Yeah, so 1,047 David LePlante, and I think Catherine, you're, you were the lead person for that, so you'll be kind enough to read the proposed resolution.
I will.
Before, just to, so with Joe recusing himself, Richard, not here, Brian, do you, will you be able to vote on this? Do you feel comfortable to vote? Okay, great. Thank you.
Resolution of the Town of Reinbeck zoning board, appeals in the matter of the area variance application of David LePlante. Z.B.A. case number 1047. Background, the applicant is David LePlante, referred to hereafter as the applicant. Property involved, this appeal involves property located at 44 Cedar Lane in the Town of Reinbeck and which bears the tax parcel number 637000040714. The applicant's property is a parcel of 3.3 acres in area and is located in the RC5 Southern District. Description of the proposed project, the applicant proposes to expand an existing attached garage. The expansion proposed will be 1,000 square feet and will increase the garage size to a total of 1,628 square feet. The purpose of this expansion is to allow two cars to be parked inside the garage. The extension of the garage would be the same style, material, color, and shape as the existing garage, save that the pitch of the roof for the extension may be a slightly higher to allow adequate room for parking vehicles. Area variance is requested. This proposed extension will require two area variances. The first area variance required is for the side yard setback. Pursuant to Town of Reinbeck zoning law, section 12527A2B, no accessory structure shall be set back from any lot line, less than 75% of the side setback in that zoning district. In the RC5 zoning district, the side yard setback is 50 feet, thus the side yard setback for accessory structures is 37.5 feet. The garage will be 22 feet, eight inches from the side yard, thus an area variance of 14 feet, nine inches is being requested. The second area variance required is for the square footage. Pursuant to Town of Reinbeck zoning law, all roofed or otherwise enclosed accessory structures, except for agricultural buildings, shall in aggregate comprise not more floor area than the principal dwelling on the lot or 1,500 square feet, whichever is the more restrictive. Here, 1,500 square feet is the more restrictive amount. The square footage of the garage would be 1,628 square feet, thus an area variance of 128 square feet is being requested. Z.B.A. review, timeliness of appeal. The applicant filed an appeal with this board on September 5th, 2023, and has paid directions with fee. The appeal was filed within 60 days of the date of the D.E.O.'s determination appealed from dated September 1, 2023, and thus the application is timely as required by section 125125B of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. This application was deemed complete and accepted by this board on October 18th, 2023. SECR, after accepting this appeal, we determined that this matter should be classified as a Type II action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act because the project, the proposed action, involves the construction, expansion, or placement of minor accessory approved residential structures, including garages, not changing the land use or density section 6 NYCRR, section 617.5C12. No further environmental review is required pursuant to SECR. Referrals and responses, this application was referred to the Town of Reinbeck zoning board on, looks like we need a date here.
Oh, I think, October 23rd.
We have the date?
10/23.
Okay, 10/23, 2023. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board responded on November 9th, 2023, stating that the request of area variance is raised. No significant planning or environmental concerns for the construction of a garage attached to the existing house. I recommend that the Z.B.A. rely on its own study of the facts and make its determination. Public hearing, a public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held at Reinbeck Town Hall on November 15th, 2023. During the course of the public hearing, a neighbor, Antonetta Sinkata, was present at the meeting and stated she had no issue with the proposed project. The public hearing was closed on November 15th, 2023. Site visit, on November 4th, 2023, Z.B.A. member Scott Bergen, Catherine Clark, and Richard Kupchansky visited the applicant's property and surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment, and character of the surrounding neighborhood. Joe Kupiak attended the site visit as a member, looks like we have that, yeah, we need to take that second unmembered, of the Conservation Advisory Board. The proposed extension will be consistent with the existing house and will not conflict with the neighborhood homes, which are single and two-story houses built in the 1960s and 1970s. No business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Findings and conclusions of law. Balancing test, in our review of the variances, thought we would consider the benefit to the applicant if the area variances are granted and is weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We determine that the variances requested should be granted because there is no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community for the granting of these variances. Consideration of five-factor balancing test. In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by section 125124C1 of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law as follows. If the variances are granted, will they cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to this question is no. The neighborhood is composed of residential homes, which are single and two-story houses. The addition to the garage would be the same nature, in the same nature as the other residential homes in the area. The design will be in keeping with the existing structure and will not be out of place or out of character with the residential neighborhood. There is also vegetation between the neighbor on the side that is closest to the garage. This vegetation further mitigates any potential visual impact to the neighbor. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? We find the answer to this question is no. The existing garage is attached to the existing home, just barely within the side yard setback. The driveway comes up to that side of the garage. To extend the garage for the purpose of parking cars in it, the extension must be provided on the, off the western side of the garage as the house is attached to the east side. The extension would need to be of a size feasible to fit two cars inside the garage, which would have to extend into the side yard setback given the existing structure. For the purposes of fitting two cars in the garage, an area variance would be required. Are the requests of area variances substantial? We find the answer to this question is no. Although numerically the variance may seem substantial, but the nature of the variance, to extend the garage for the purpose of parking two cars in a residential neighbor, I think that should be neighborhood. The variance is not substantial in nature. Will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no. The proposed expansion of the garage will expand on and over the existing driveway, so there will not be much physical disturbance. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant. The applicant could do without having a two-car garage. However, a garage that can fit, can fit two cars is not an unreasonable request for a residential home in a residential neighborhood. Moreover, having the garage extended for this purpose makes sense in the neighborhood and is a reasonable addition. Minimal variance requested: In addition to our review of the five factors of balancing test, we must also determine if these requested variances are the minimal variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant. We find the answer to this question is yes. A certain size is required to accommodate two vehicles. The requested variances will allow the two vehicles to be parked inside the garage. Now therefore be it resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. The ZBA hereby grants the variances requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The request to extend the garage an additional one thousand square feet for the purpose of parking two vehicles inside is reasonable. It is a reasonable addition and a fitting addition within, within the neighborhood. The granting of these variances is expressly contingent upon the construction being in conformity with the height, style, and design presented to the board. Section three, the granting of these variances shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to, to the Town of Reinbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application, in full compliance with article fourteen, fee reimbursement of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section four, the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. The proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application plans submitted. Section five, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is in conformity within one year of this resolution.
Thank you, Catherine. Discussion. I mean, I, we went out there and it made perfect sense to me and, uh, shake it, you know, it's fine, it's, uh, it makes a lot of sense and, uh, to me, this was an easy one to grant. I don't know how the rest of the gang feels. Yeah, maybe this is kind of a no-brainer. So, uh, anyway, good job on the resolution, Kim. And, uh... You should make a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution as read with a few updates that we talked about as you went through.
Second? Second? Okay, Gretchen?
Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right. Kim, do you have a problem if we skip ahead?
No.
We have, you're last on the list, but we're gonna move you up because you're here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I know you probably want to spend a lot of time here with us.
We don't mind.
Well, anyway, all right, so, um, basically what I'm gonna do here is the proposed resolution has already been, um, uh, put on the website and has been published, so...
Yep.
Because it's pretty lengthy, all I'm gonna do is read a, uh, basically the action points, which is the now, therefore, the resolved part, the body of it. It is, is already been on the website, everything else.
Yeah, we have hard copies over here. Thank you guys.
And hard copies.
And before we do that, I just want to make sure all the board, oh, first of all, sorry, um, Joe's coming back for the screening.
Come back.
Come back.
Well, no, actually, I used to go with the audience, but it's, John used to, your, your buddy there, John, used to use me, he used to make me go to the audience.
It is the best way, but it's okay.
Okay.
So I would just like to just, I had provided a draft to the board last week for your review. I wanted to make sure everyone's had a chance to read it, any questions or any comments.
Yeah, my only comment, and I already said this to you, I thought you did a great job researching of what was on the past. I mean, and you went back to records that were, what, twenty-fourteen, or maybe even before, I don't know, but, um, I was on the board, so I knew what we wanted to do and what we were intending to do, but what you discovered was backups and, and, you know,
Yeah, it was taken during the...
Minutes, the whole thing, we, so you know exactly what we were thinking back then, and you put it into the body of resolution. I know it took a lot of time and effort, so, uh, I think you did a really good job researching it and, and putting all that stuff in. So, uh, and there was, I think, I don't know, I, I think we should probably mention this, the, the attorney for the applicant, maybe you can take us through that.
Yeah, so, um, so this, as we mentioned, I had this, after I let you guys have a chance to review it, um, I asked if it could be posted online so that the public had a chance to view it, and then I forwarded a copy to Victoria Paladaro, who represents Upstate Down, um, in case she had any questions or, and she did have, um, she had a clarity question. Oh, that's because I don't have it here. Um, she referred to section E of the, um...
Here, do you want this?
That's okay, I took a, I took a screen shot of it, I just, we just forget where we're going on.
You got it, okay.
Yeah. So section E of this, which currently states, one, one of the things, Scott will read, um, we disagree with that portion of the zoning enforcement officer's notice of violation determination, which found that the property was being used by the applicant as an office showroom space. We overturn and render void that portion of the notice violation. We find that the proposed use meets the definition of restaurant, and the applicant will need to comply with said definition to continue use of the restaurant. And what Victoria, what wanted to clarify was that the use variance has not expired, and then she put in parentheses, um, so long as applicant diligently obtains DOH approval. So, um, I think that from, and now let Scott kind of, this is just my legal take on it, was that the questions before the board was what was the use variance that was granted for the property? And then if the applicant's proposed use was in the confines of that, which the board has addressed, um, I think based on the discussions with the board, it was clear that your opinion was that the use variance, you know, is still valid, it has not expired. We didn't really get into, you know, diligent, we acknowledged that the applicant's going, you know, currently going through the DOH. We didn't really discuss, it's, that's kind of getting a little bit more into almost like conditions. I think that's outside of the board's question at the moment, but, um, if you guys have any comments on that.
I think they're gonna need that, obviously, in the future to, to run the restaurant, but the fact that they didn't have it at the time, that, you know, the food trucks and all the other stuff was going on, um, I don't think it's determinative of whether the use was continued. That's in the past, there was that activity, whether it had a DOH approval or not. But going forward, obviously, you're gonna have to have it, so, uh, it was almost, um, it was an interesting point, but I don't think it was determinative, and I don't think it would, it really affects our decision in any way, when we're looking at what was actually done. And, um, so, we, uh, Kim did address that, inserted an extra sentence to address that.
Yeah, so one of the things, when, Scott, if you want to be reading the...
I'll mention it.
I just added a sentence in section E, which just confirms that we find the use variance, we, the ZBA, we find the use variance has not expired as of the date of this resolution, just to make that clear.
Okay. And so let me just read, again, instead of reading the, the very large resolution, I'm just gonna read the action points. Now therefore be it resolved based upon all the findings of fact and conclusions of law described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section A, the use variance granted on April fifteenth, twenty fourteen, ZBA case number eight fifty-five, and subsequently re-granted in twenty fifteen, ZBA case number eight-nine-four, and twenty sixteen, ZBA case number nine-two-five, for the property, were for the continued use of the property as a restaurant slash bar. Section B, for the life of the use variance, the restaurant slash bar use on the property by the applicant and by any successors in ownership of the property shall comply with the following definition of restaurant, taken from Reinbeck zoning law section one-twenty-five-dash-one-thirty-five, which that, which states, "An establishment licensed by the Duchess County Health Department, where food and drink is prepared, served, consumed, and sold primarily within the principal building or its outdoor terrace or patio area. The term restaurant shall not include a fast-food establishment as defined herein. A bar or pub that also serves food shall be considered a restaurant." And so that must be the Department of Health.
Going forward.
Yeah, going forward. So, uh, section C, the use variance shall not be construed as prohibiting the property from being lawfully used by any commercial use that is otherwise permitted in the RC five in the zoning district, subject to required approvals. Section D, we agree with that portion of the zoning enforcement officer's notice of violation, uh, the determination appealed of from, in this case, which found that using the property as a business office, business service, apparel, or home goods, or an artisan's shop and gallery is not permitted, as these are uses, uh, are not allowed uses in the rural slash countryside RC five zoning district. And we uphold that portion of the notice of violation. Section E, we disagree with the portion of the zoning enforcement officer's notice of violation determination, which found that the property was used by the applicant as an office slash showroom space, and we overturn and render void that portion of the notice of violation. We find that the use variance has not expired as of the date of this resolution. We find that the proposed use of the property by the applicant meets the definition of restaurant. The applicant will need to comply with, uh, said definition to continue its use of the property as a restaurant. Section F, accessory use is customarily associated with restaurant use, such as displaying artwork or featuring an artist's live music, a small sports court, or renting of the building for special events on occasion are prohibited within restaurant use. However, at all times, the restaurant use of the property shall be focused around the preparation, service, consumption, and sale of food and drink primarily within the principal building or its outdoor terrace or patio, patio area. Section G, we state for clarity that this decision by the ZBA is an interpretation answering questions about the use variance previously granted for the property, which were raised by the zoning enforcement officer's notice of violation and the appeal to us from that determination by the applicant. Our decision does not change the use variance for the property originally granted on April fifteenth, twenty fifteen, and that use variance, as well as all conditions attached to it, as set forth in the ZBA's resolution adopted on April fifteenth, twenty fifteen, remain in force and effect.
I just wanna just, uh, just, it should be twenty-fourteen, so I'm just making those changes here. The original use variance.
Twenty-fourteen, yeah, twenty-fourteen.
Yeah.
Right. So, any discussions amongst everybody? I mean, to me, I have my readings, you know what they are, but I want to hear it for you guys.
Kim, I thought you did a great job on this resolution. Scott said from the back through all the history of it. I think from going out there and everything, I totally agree with this recommendation in the resolution.
Anything else? All right, well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, the resolution as, as read.
With the, those, uh, the addition, uh, the change of the date to twenty-fourteen.
With the change of the date to twenty-fourteen. Do I have a second? Second. Okay.
All right, Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really, really appreciate it, and I hope you all have a really tough day holidays.
You too.
Thank you.
Forward to the same resolution.
Yes. Okay. So the next one is Fixler.
And, um, for the rest of Joe's, you don't have to go into the, but you're gonna...
Yeah, you're gonna work this again. So anyway, Kim, do you want me to read it? That the one thing I did notice is before I start going on it, it says the applicant seeks to install a small awning, fifty feet by thirty-six feet.
Yeah, is that not what it is?
That's not what it is, and that's, and that's not a small awning.
I, I, I was looking at my notes and I thought that was a...
No, actually, I, I looked, and the reason I apologize for making all that noise, Catherine, while you were reading, but I was like, that does not make sense.
I didn't, yeah.
So, I, it'd be no offense, but it was just...
I wasn't paying attention, but I was...
I was like, whoa, that's actually the size of the house.
I, yeah, I thought, because I just had fifty by thirty-six, I was like, not...
I believe it should be changed to seven feet eleven and a half inches by two feet.
Okay.
I think that's what it is, because it is a very small little awning over a door.
But with seven feet...
I believe, um, my best going through this, if you go to the second page of the...
Is it on the grid?
On, on the architect, I didn't see it on the grid.
The grid says fifty by three feet.
Yeah, the grid says, yeah.
That's what I'm...
No, 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 if you go to the grid, or you go to, you go to the, uh...
All of the fifty inches?
The architect's drawings, and you go to the second page, it looks like you go on the, the only here is, is seven inch right here, fifty.
Oh, okay.
You see Joe?
Dimensions right there, yeah.
Dimension right here, it looks like a seven feet eleven and a half inches, eleven inch here, help me.
Yeah, it looks about right there.
Okay, and then about two feet? You got two feet here?
Well, that's in height, right, or is it, in longitude?
That's the, um, the width.
The width, okay.
Yeah, so the width appears to be two feet, and the length appears to be seven feet eleven and a half inches.
Yeah, it was based on the windows and doors, that looks about right there.
So we, we should make that, so, I just wanted to... All right, anyway. Resolution of Town of Reinbeck zoning board appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Eric Fixler, case number, uh, ten forty-nine, or one thousand forty-nine. Background: Applicant, uh, the applicant is Eric Fixler, uh, referred to herein as applicant. The applicant is represented before this board by Brian Walker of the firm of Brian Walker Architects. Property involved: This appeal involves property located at four-nine-six Spartanburg Road in the Town of Reinbeck, which bears the tax parcel number six-two-six-eight-zero-zero-six-nine-oh-eight-seven-one. The applicant's property is one point three acres in the area, uh, let's see, the applicant's property is one point three acres in area and is located in the RC five zoning district. Description of the proposed project: The applicant seeks to install a small awning, awning, uh, which should be seven foot eleven and a, eleven and a half inches by two feet over the front door. Previously, a deck had been installed, installed off the second floor, which was over the front door, but the deck has since been removed due to rot. The awning is proposed to be over the front door where the deck used to be. It will provide some rain coverage over the entryway. Rather than replace the deck, the applicant felt a smaller awning was more suitable for the character of the neighborhood and still, uh, and still...
Desired.
Desired some protection over the front of the entryway. Area variance requested: The house, which predated zoning, is currently within the setback. Pursuant to the Town of Reinbeck zoning law section one-twenty-five-dash-nineteen, the existing front side of the, of the existing structure, uh, structures that predate December two thousand nine are grandfathered in. Additions or other improvements made or proposed within, without requiring an area variance, unless that addition or improvement is nearer to the property line than the existing structure. The awning is closer to the front yard, thus the owner requires an area variance. One area variance is required for the front yard setback. In the RC five, uh, the front yard setback is one hundred feet. Uh, the awning will be fifty-six feet from the front yard, so an area variance of forty-four feet is requested by the applicant. ZBA review: Timeliness of appeal: The applicant filed an appeal with this board on October second, twenty twenty-three, and has paid the requisite fee. The appeal was filed within the sixty days of the date of the CEO's determination appealed from dated September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, and thus the application is timely as required by, uh, section one-twenty-five-dash-one-twenty-five B of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. This application was deemed complete and accepted by this board on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, subject to the ZBA receiving a colorized rendering of the awning, which were provided. Secur: After accepting this appeal, we determine that the matter should be classified as a type-two action under State Environmental Quality Review Act Secur because the project proposed action involves the granting of area variance for a single-family home, six NYCRR six seventeen point five C seventeen. No further environmental review is required pursuant to Secur. Referrals and responses: The application was referred to the Town of Reinbeck zoning board pursuant to the, uh, Town of Reinbeck zoning law section one-twenty-five-dash-one-twenty-five B on... Board pursuant to the Town of Reinbeck zoning law, section 125-125B on...
October 23. Sorry, I didn't send them revised, but Gretchen confirmed that.
Okay. So put that in. The Town of Reinbeck, excuse me, Planning Board responded on November, is it November 6?
Yeah, so was it November 6 or November 9? I guess, no, I guess it was at the meeting, right? The referrals are dated, I guess, like you...
They're dated when I signed them, yeah.
So, yeah, so that's why I was...
So it would have been the date of the meeting that it was actually...
Yeah, it would be the 6th then.
Okay. Stating that the requested area variance raised no significant planning or environmental concerns for the construction of a garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
How about an awning?
Yeah.
Instead of just take a garage and put in an awning. For the construction of an awning attached to the existing house, and recommended that the ZBA relied on its own study of the facts in making its determination. The Planning Board noted that while the awning protrudes four feet into the existing front yard setback along historic Spartanburg Road, it is much smaller and more appropriate for the front facade of the house than the larger deck that was demolished. The Planning Board also noted that the awning is located behind an existing row of trees that screen the house and the proposed awning. So I'm not sure how that squares the four foot closer with the two foot width, doesn't really make sense to me.
The only thing I've been looking, so I was looking at that, is that it's the distance that's really important.
Well, no, yeah, to the front. All right, well...
Plus the distance is right.
Yeah, I'm sure the distance is right.
You know, it could be, I can always take out the measurement of the awning and we'll just say a small awning at the beginning.
If you want.
So we don't want to come in to the size.
That way we wouldn't have that foot port.
That's a nice fluffy way of taking care of it. I like that. A small one.
A small awning, okay.
So we'll do that. Yeah, well, all right. Public hearing. A public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held at the Reinbeck Town Hall on November 15, 2023. During the course of the public hearing, one comment was received from a neighbor, Alan White, who stated that the awning was an excellent improvement to what was there originally. The public hearing was closed on November 15, 2023. Site visit on November 4, 2023, ZBA members Scott Bergen, Catherine Clark, and Richard Kaplinski visited the applicant's property and the surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment, and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Joe Kupiak attended the site visit as a member, as a member, take out.
Oh, that's double.
Yes, it's double, yeah. As a member of the Conservation Advisory Board, CAB, the area was noted to have a few historic structures nearby, but the awning will still be less intrusive than the larger deck and more fitting with the character of the neighborhood. No business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Findings effective, conclusions of law, balancing test. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the area variance is granted as weighting as the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. We determine that the area variance requested should be granted because there is no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of this variance. Consideration of the five factors and balancing test. In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by section 125-124C1 of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law as follows. A, if the variance is granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find that the answer to this question is no. The owner of the awning will be smaller in size and protrude less into the setback than the original deck that was taken down. The deck on the second floor protruded about eight to nine feet closer to the road, whereas the awning protruses only three to four feet. The awning cleans up a facade of the house, and the simplicity of the awning improves the visuals of the area. Other houses in the area have large decks or porches, so this awning, which is smaller in size and scale, does not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to the nearby properties. B, can this benefit sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant pursue other than an area variance? We find that the answer to this question is no, that the existing house predates zoning and therefore is already within the setback. Any addition to the front of the house would require an area variance. As the awning is meant to cover the front porch to provide some thorough protection from the rain, the awning must be constructed in the front, and therefore an area variance will still be required. Is the required area variance substantial? We find that the answer to this question is no. The awning protrudes approximately three to four feet from the existing structure. Although the variance may seem like a substantial number, the house is already within the setback, the addition of the awning, awning is not substantial. D, will the proposed variance have an adverse effect, excuse me, adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? We find that the answer to this question is no. No disturbance will occur to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The awning replaces a larger deck, the simplicity of the awning improves the facade of the house and cleans up the area nicely. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find that the answer to this question is yes. The applicant could forego having an awning over the front door. However, it is a reasonable justification to install the awning to provide cover from the elements and a reasonable addition to a residential structure. As the existing house is already within the setback, any addition to the front would require an area variance. Twelve minimal variances requested. In addition to our review of the five factors and balancing tests, we must determine if this requested area variance is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to establish what is requested by the applicant. We find that this answer to the question is yes, and any addition to the front of the house would require an area variance due to the setback. However, the proposed awning is minimal and in a less, and is a less protrusion into the front yard than what existed previously. Now therefore be it resolved based upon all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The awning replaces a much larger deck, and the awning in its simplicity creates clean...
I think, I think that's the next term, so it should just be, the awning in its simplicity cleans up the property.
Yeah, cleans up the property and fits within the residential neighborhood. Section two, the granting of these variant, of this, this, various is expressly contingent upon the construction and installation of the awning being in conformity with the size and design presented to the board. Section three, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Reinbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full accordance with Article 14 Fee Reimbursement of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid and fulfilled by the applicant. Four, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. The proposed structure may be construct, the proposed structure must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. And five, the area variance shall not be void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. So, nice job on the resolution. I mean, this would be another no-brainer, and it's, the awning is so much nicer than what was there before in its neighborhood and the age of the house, which is, I think it's a couple hundred years old. It just made a lot of sense, very well done. It just looked very nice on the plan, so... But what does everybody else have to say?
I agree.
Uh-huh.
I agree.
You agree? And you?
I can't say anything.
Oh, you can't say, oh, that's right, you can't say anything, so, yeah, I asked you. Anyway, yeah, it's just, this is an easy one.
Shh.
Anyway, so I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as read with the couple of changes that need to be made.
Second.
Okay. Gretchen?
Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe.
Joe, that's right. And that is all we have. Do you have anything else? If we're done? All right, well, welcome again. You made it through your first meeting, and maybe, 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 maybe more. So I'll make a motion to return.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and all that kind of stuff to everybody.